Could I invite two forty-seven up here to lead us in the pledge allegiance? Thank you, appreciate it. Sorry, we're springing this on them last minute. Come on up here. Thank you. I'll let you all start it.
Come on over, guys. We've got plenty of room for everybody.
Got an extra seat, too, if someone wants to take it.
Everybody get on in here. Come on in, Marty. We're gonna have you guys lead the pledge. So how you would do it in a regular troop game, okay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two.
Thank you very much, good to have you all here. Is it your first council meeting? Yep. Glad to have you, thank you. Okay. Welcome to this April twenty-first city council meeting. Katie, could I have a roll call for attendance, please?
Okay, Councilperson Beverly? Rams?
Here.
Flynn?
Here.
Morrissey?
Here.
Soha?
Present.
Stutschel?
Here.
Wolfram?
Here.
Mayor Procton Gallo?
Here.
Seven, uh, one.
Okay, looks like Matt was here at one point. Unless, did you put that stuff on his desk?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, huh, uh, okay, thank you. Um, we, oh, there are agendas for those who are here for the first time as you walk in. If you want to follow along, they're on my right by the door. Okay, let's move on to approval of the agenda. We have a few items to add here. We have two items from the ONG committee. The first is the minutes from our April seventeenth meeting. And, uh, the second is a set of reforms to the, um, to the way that we call committee meetings. Uh, it's, it's not expressly laid out in our rules of procedure, who could call the committee meeting and what they would consider. Uh, so we created some rules for that, which, uh, the council members should have in front of them. Uh, one of the main items that are, so we, we passed that, the new rules of procedure. We also recommended, uh, this is me, Councilman Morrissey and Councilman Stutchel. We recommended against the, um, Officers' Compensation Committee's recommendation for a council raise. So those are the two, um, primary items there. Do I have a motion on the minutes and the rules of procedures to add to the consent agenda?
So who?
Motion from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Soha, to add the ONG April seventeenth committee meeting minutes and the new rules of procedure to the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it? Let's see, what was the other item? Two letters, it looks like. Um, let's see, we have a letter from Kyle Kirsten and it was this other one from Sue. Not seeing the last name.
Sue Arnold.
Sue Arnold, okay. This was
Oh, that, okay.
just for me. About a loose dog, okay, so maybe we won't add that one to the agenda, but that, that can be in the minutes. Okay. To add this communication to the agenda. Marcus, we don't really need to add this to the agenda. We can just read it during the officers' compensation, a letter opposing the pay raises. Okay, anything else to add to the agenda? Motion from Councilman Soha to approve the amended agenda, seconded by Councilman Morrissey. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, we have an agenda. We'll move on to public comments on agenda items, please. Uh, restrict your comments to agenda items only. The podium is open, you have three minutes to speak, thank you. Oh, great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Greg Bailey. I'm a resident of the City of Hillsdale, residing at Seventeen Foxtail Lane in the Three Meadows subdivision. I come before the city council this evening to address the agenda item for officers' compensation. I believe I can speak with some credibility on the issue, having served as a city council person from nineteen ninety-two through nineteen ninety-five, and also serving as mayor from nineteen ninety-five to two thousand and one. And continuing service as a member of the board of directors of Hillsdale Hospital since nineteen ninety-five, including a seat on the standing committee for officers' compensation, which has set the compensation for the last three hospital administrators. I agree that the mayor and Hillsdale city councilperson's compensation should be increased, since apparently it has remained the same since two thousand and fifteen. I was actually a member of the Officers' Compensation Committee in two thousand and fifteen that determined these salaries, which were unadjusted from years past. And frankly, shame on all of us, this commission is supposed to meet every two years, no matter what, as I read the charter. There are apparently no meetings in two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-one, or two thousand twenty-three. Now, I know the amount of hours needed for this job effectively, and I believe that there should be reasonable compensation for this service. However, I do not agree with the determination that has been put forth by the current Officers' Compensation Commission for a number of reasons. When the hospital's compensation committee meets, we are provided with compensation figures from similar-sized hospitals. We don't need to reinvent the wheel, the data is out there. I do not believe that the City of Hillsdale Officers' Compensation Commission utilized any comparable information for like-sized cities in making their determination. But I do believe that you now have that information in tonight's council packet, and if you've looked closely at those numbers, you know what I'm about to say. For cities with population between seven and ten thousand, with Hillsdale eight thousand thirty-six, the average compensation for mayor was thirty-six hundred. City of Hillsdale is currently at thirty-seven hundred. For those same cities, the average compensation for a city council person was two thousand one twenty-six. City of Hillsdale is currently at fourteen thirty plus thirty dollars per committee meeting. This debt also includes the taxable value for each community and a figure for annual expenditures, and Hillsdale was second to last in both of those categories. I do believe that City of Hillsdale is unique among this group of cities, having an electric utility, a municipal airport under its control, as well as a college and a county fairgrounds within city limits. This presents both challenges and opportunities for elected officials and administration, which would justify moving to a higher percentile of compensation. The determination proposed by the Officers' Comp- Committee is twenty-five thousand for mayor, which is over three times the highest for like-sized cities. The proposal for council person is ten thousand, which is over two times the high for comparable cities. I do not believe that Hillsdale is unique enough to justify that large of an increase. I do appreciate the commission's desire to expect more involvement from their government officials, but I do believe that quote-unquote "better governance" is not achieved by boosting these numbers. In my opinion, your only reasonable course of action is for you to reject the determination of the commission and make sure that they have the appropriate information when they next meet in two thousand twenty-seven.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey, appreciate it.
Hello, Shannon Lee, may I? On the compensation, I don't have enough information. I don't know why the increase, I don't know what I'm gonna get for my money, you know, because it's a job opportunity, it's a job increase. So for me, right now, I am saying no, because I need more information. I wanna know what you're going to do, you know, to do, what, what you're gonna do more than you have been doing. I know the previous councils, they didn't read a lot of the statements, because I would ask them, you know, a, a, a line item that came down on the bills, they had no idea what I was talking about, these line items. I read the line items. Am I gonna get that? I don't know. So I would like to know. I know you guys are limited, because it's really, you, you are being halfway volunteering, you really are volunteering for this job. And I do a lot of volunteer work, and I know a lot of hours go in. I don't mind the increase, I just wanna know, maybe not as high, but what are you going to do for the increase? I'd like to see more of you guys take control and let you control our city manager, and not the city manager control you. Right now, he's got a lot of overhead. He's taking care of BPU, the gas, the city. He's a, he's a big head over a lot of things. And to me, it's too much. But if the city council would pitch in and help oversee some of this thing, and maybe partner with him on it, maybe we could get work done with our city.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Believe it or not, I'm not here to talk about compensation. Uh, I'm Ken Josswick, I'm the president of Hillsdale Business Association, business owner here in Hillsdale. Came to talk for, it'll be the third time now in front of council, been to several committee meetings over the last two and a half years about the permit fees and the fees for putting on the light-up parade and Summer in the City and the downtown events. The current structure is too much for a nonprofit that collects forty dollars this year for, to be a member, thirty-five dollars for the last twenty-some years. Uh, the HBA's been here in Hillsdale almost twenty years, and we have a total of about three thousand dollars in the bank today, which sixteen-hundred of that every year goes towards insurance. The business is in town, believe it or not, whether you opened a business that you invested twenty thousand dollars or you invested two million dollars, more than likely it was everything you had. You probably put your house on the line, you probably put all your bank accounts, whatever retirement money, money you had, into your business when you opened it. It takes a lot to be able to advertise and to go out and to knock on doors and say, hey, I need to collect a thousand dollars for permits. We're not gonna give you any advertising. We're not gonna, we'll talk about you where we can for a couple seconds. But there's no radio, there's a little bit of social media, and that's all we can do, because we have to pay for a permit. It's not right. We wanna bring these events back to the city. My board took a really big hit last November when it went out on social media. It was totally unfair, that we didn't try hard enough, that nobody made an effort, but yet, they come to every meeting, it takes four to five, possibly six meetings to be able to put on the light-up parade alone. It takes an awful lot of time, and these are all volunteers that put their time in to make this happen. And I really hope you'll reconsider and find a way to make this feasible for us to keep it in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Penny Swan, Ward Four. I was one of them that was on the Officers' Compensation Committee. I was fully prepared to give a reasonable raise, because I do know what all of you guys do. And I think it was a horrible insult that was stated, that if you guys got more money, you would do a better job. I think every single one of you guys do your best, pay regardless, to do your best for the citizens of Hillsdale. So I just found that incredibly insulting to you guys, that you would do a better job if you got more pay. Like I said, I was prepared to go in and do, like, uh, cost of living rates, I do know, you get, you spend a lot of time doing your job. But I just couldn't go for the crazy amount. That's why I voted no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Sessions, Ward Three. One oh-two, code three, circle. I'm speaking in regards to the Berry Street Special Assessment District, or SAD. In the council packet, it looks like a cap of two thousand or three thousand was mentioned to give Berry Street residents a SAD break. I spoke to residents from the Westwood Project, and they agree with me that if that cap, if this cap break is not given to all taxpayers who are already paying the sub-tap cap of five thousand, that they consider that to be a discrimination against all of those residents who are already paying the SAD. The residents want either a three-thousand-dollar credit toward their SAD, or if the cap goes to two thousand, or a two-thousand credit towards that SAD, if the cap goes to three thousand. They said that if they already paid the five thousand, then they want any money back, and the ones who are paying ten years want their credit for their account. Lastly, I'm speaking about the Officers' Compensation Committee salary determination. First of all, Mayor Procton Palladino, at one hour and forty-eight minutes into the April seventh, twenty-twenty-five city council meeting, he said he took the first five applicants for the Officers' Compensation Commission. That is not true, he did not take the first five applications. If he would have, then the first application of the applications, then Mr. Ted Jansen should have been on that commission, as he was one of the first five residents to submit their application to be on the commission instead of Mr. Russell Richardson. I am, I am questioning if Mr. Richardson's application to the Officers' Compensation Commission is even legal, since he never actually signed the application and just typed his name on the application. I would ask the city attorney if this was done legally. If, if it is, if it was signed illegally, then I ask the city council to amend the agenda and throw out the salary determination. I would also ask city council to remove Mr. Richardson off the compensation and put Mr. Jansen on the, on the commission and have a new meeting to determine compensation. For the record, I am totally against the increase, um, that was recommended by the Officers' Compensation Commission. May, um, let's see. I served as a city councilman and mayor to serve the people of Hillsdale and to try to make Hillsdale a better place to live for all of, uh, its residents. Like others on city councils set, have set, I also say that I did not serve the residents of Hillsdale for the money. Again, I'm totally against the increase for the officers, from the Officers' Compensation Committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, CJ Timebreak, Ward Three. Um, I would like to, first of all, are we having a, um, an opportunity to speak about Berry Street, or is this it?
This is it.
Okay. Um, I wasn't sure the way it said open meeting. Okay. Um, so, speaking on Berry Street, two things. Um, I hope we move forward with the project. I also hope that we're able to put a better cap. My thought process on going and going retroactive to people that have previously paid, and I am one of them, um, that when policies change, you don't go retroactive and, and go back and fix whatever. You're never gonna move forward in the city if you don't start making changes. And it's going to, um, negatively affect some people in the past, but the goal is to move forward and make it better in the future. So I don't think you should even consider something retroactive or make it stall you from doing something that's going to improve something for the future projects. Um, so, my other thing is, I just wanna address that at the last meeting, I was extremely disappointed to hear that the manager blamed, um, some people on council, um, on the retirement of some of the people that have retired, because, why I was so shocked by it is because I remember having a conversation with her when I went to talk to her about the SAD for Berry Street, and she had mentioned at that time, and that was like at least four months ago, that she was already in the process of retiring. So if by asking questions on policies or looking at things that are going to cause somebody to quit or be accused of someone quitting, then what are we doing? Okay, I mean, how are we gonna fix this city if we're not willing to question what we're doing now? How do we move forward? You have to be willing to allow people to say, what are the policies and why are we doing it this way? And if you believe that the policies are correct, then stand behind them and explain them. But to just try to shut people up when they're trying to question things, I, I don't understand it at all. Like, when did it become a problem to question? Or to ask for answers? And, um, I, the letter that I sent to all of you, that was the other thing that I brought up in the letter that I sent you, is that, is there not a way for us to get to a part where we can actually have a conversation with the committee? Not just get up three minutes and talk, and then you hear what we have to say, and then that's it? Where can we go? Where, how can we set it up where there is gonna be an opportunity, where we can speak to the board as a whole and ask questions and get answers? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis Wayne Scott, Ward One. Uh, in reference to what CJ was talking about. You know, that's one thing I, you know, I've been coming here for several years, I've already brought forth, uh, town hall meetings. You know, that's something that, uh, as councilmen, I haven't seen. There's only two that I, well, one for sure, and she's no longer a councilman now, but she would go around and have town hall meetings with her constituents. One thing, you guys, I don't know, 'cause some of you are new, some of you are, you know, been here for a while, some of you probably don't care, uh, because your time's coming up. So, you know, the thing is, we need to be able, just like CJ was saying, a time to be able to talk to you. It's not just coming up here and, and talking in this mic, but it's time that we are, can have either a face-to-face with answers coming back to us. We all have questions, and, and we can look at the agenda, we can do this and we can do that. But the thing is, where is the one-on-one? Or the ability to talk as humans? That's what this world's having problems with right now. Everything wants to become mechanical, and, and robot this, robot that. Do we have to have a robotic, uh, council, too, that we can't even really talk to as humans? It's time that we turn around and have people, if you're gonna, uh, you wanna raise, you want something, let's do something for that. And one way you're gonna do it is be able to talk to your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Russell Richardson, Chair of Officers' Compensation Committee. Uh, I wanna communicate my disappointment in the way that our discussion was handled, both by members of the board and many off of it. We thought we were presenting something to you guys for us to deliberate on together, uh, work together to find the right approach. Turns out that was wrong. The three reasons that we had for listing our suggested raises were inflation's changed a lot, we want more involvement among city council in checking things and making sure cities run well, and we wanted to be more accessible to people who aren't retired. Uh, most of you have gray hair up there. I can't afford to take time off my job to do what you're doing. And if we want more young people involved, we need to make this, uh, more of a part-time job, which is what you guys do. That was our argument, but we were open to hearing yours. I've lived in the city for about seven years, and only recently I've begun to follow local politics. Last week, I tried to call another meeting of the Compensation Committee. By statute, we were allowed fifteen meetings before submitting a decision, and unprompted, the city manager intervened and asked the attorney to prevent us from meeting again, demanding that our previous decision, which I had not submitted to you, was final. Despite being told otherwise, in the very meeting where we met, it's on, it's on the video record, uh, our, our meeting minutes were interpreted as final. The bylaws of our committee leave open the question of revisiting, revisiting this decision that hasn't been final. And that is apparently, the silence of that is apparently the basis for, for making another meeting. Uh, there, there was basis for that, this argument didn't have to be, be made if people were willing to see it. We, you can send it back to us, we're glad to revisit and, and take the reasonable feedback into consideration. Last week, it was suggested that the negative culture on this council resulted in the exit of two city staff people. Both of those people have been talking about retiring for years, months, I mean, months now. So to use that as political leverage is shameful. This negative culture was directed primarily at one individual who was accused of rallying people to oppose the raise, bonus, and severance package last fall. Based on my experience on this committee, I'm beginning to have a different theory about why those people showed up. They're tired of the same old, same old. They're tired of stories of city staff who have been silenced for holding dissenting opinions. They're, they're tired of lawsuits for fences barely over property lines. They're tired of increased property taxes for thee, but not for me, tired of attempts to secure severance packages weeks before an election. And watching this, the, the planned retirement of these two individuals being used as political ammo is, is really shameful, and my own experience from this Officers' Compensation Committee. I, I wanna be charitable and give the benefit of the doubt to our city manager, but I, I wonder about these things. Maybe there's an easy and reasonable explanation, and I would open-mindedly be welcome to hear it. Competence is appreciated, but the people of Hillsdale desire leaders who work for their best interest, which is why I wanted to compensate you in the first place, for doing the hard work of representing us. Keep up the good work, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Jeff Vazias. First of all, I'd like to say thank you. And the reason I'm saying thank you is I probably none of you on council even know this gentleman, but a past councilman once told me, this is probably the most unappreciated job in the world. So thank you for what you do, even though we're here giving you an earful. I would want to talk about the compensation situation. And again, I know this is probably gonna be voted down, and you'll probably actually go negative on what you're doing in terms of zero compensation, put it towards the roads. That's what we all want, our roads. It's interesting, I've been looking at the budget, for, especially going forward here. And, uh, you know, the police, we've got two million-plus dollars going forward. We have the fire department getting seven hundred thousand dollars. We have the administration getting seven hundred thousand dollars. That leaves a very little pot to fix a road. Fix our parks, do anything in our parks. Um, you look at all the different things that are going on, and we're basically the Titanic. We're, we're just trudging along with a hole, let's just drive him down. Um, and until serious considerations are made about re-adjusting everything that we do here in the city, we're gonna continue to have these people complaining, fix our damn roads. It's never gonna happen until these things are considered. And it's gonna be a tough thing, you're gonna have hundreds of people that come in if you go after the police, hundreds of people if you come in after the fire. Um, but these things have to be looked at. I mean, we can't continue to have a population decrease, an increase in our expenses in various areas that aren't serving what we're looking for. And, uh, again, police are important, fire are very important. Just hard decisions need to be made. I wish you luck, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Ted Jansen, Ward One. You have my letter. I'm not gonna berate you in front of the children, sir. But you know what you did, you know what you did was wrong. Your mere apology, your people of Hillsdale apology. I just ask you to man up and do it, thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Thank you, uh, we will move on to the consent agenda. The podium is closed. Okay, on the consent agenda, we have City of BPU Claims of April third, payroll of April tenth, city council minutes of April seventh, finance minutes of April seventh, Officers' Compensation Commission minutes of April third, ICO for Hillsdale College commencement, noise variance requests for Hillsdale College, BPU water meter purchase, BPU diesel fuel purchase, and the ONG committee minutes of April seventeenth. Any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Do I have a motion?
So who?
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Soha. Katie, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilperson Rams?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stutchel?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yeah.
Mayor Procton Palladino?
Yes.
Seven, zero.
Thank you, Katie. We'll move on to communications petitions. Letter A, we have our Mitchell Research Center's spring newsletter. Always take a look through that, good stuff, good historical information. Do we have anyone from the Mitchell Research Center here? Okay, well, thank you for that newsletter. Uh, letter B, we have Ted Jansen's letter. Letter C, we have a letter from the Hillsdale Business Association, and we already heard... Is there anything else to add on that? Uh, we also were gonna hear from Jason about this issue.
Good evening.
Thank you.
So, these both, yeah, as the HBA in their letter, the Summer in the City and the car show are fifty percent reduced as city-sponsored. Um, approximately, uh, Summer in the City, about nine hundred dollars cost, four hundred fifty would be billed out. Um, that includes labor, uh, vehicle costs, um, twenty-four thousand dollars in barricades. Um, granted, that all blew up for this event, but I just wanted to throw what we have out there and put out for all these events. So that one is under the cap of what they requested there, with the five hundred dollars. Um, the light-up parade, uh, last time we got a, um, a quote ready for Mary, when she was part of the, the light-up parade. light-up parade, it was estimated at about $2,048, which there are 50% as well, for the cost of $1,024, approximately.
Okay, so about $950 above what they're requesting?
Correct. Yeah, $550, yeah.
Each?
Well, the letter said $500 from the old structure to $500, right?
Okay.
If I refer that correctly.
Okay. Any comments or questions for Mr. Blake? Yes, Councilman Soha, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Burton. So, we addressed this in Public Services, what, a year and a half ago or so? And what I thought, and I would appreciate some clarification, maybe City Manager can help me here, is I thought that we had approved the increase and the reduction, but also that council could address each individual and make determinations per individual event to reduce them even further if possible, or eliminate them altogether. My hope would be that we, as council, would be able to bring, you know, come to a consensus with the HBA, with the other entities that operate downtown, and reinvigorate that in the downtown district, so. Am I correct, though, in that we could determine on a per basis, per parade basis?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Soha. Anything else?
Councilman Wolfman? I would just like to agree here that we should. We, you know, these things add value to the community, and these are nonprofits, and as I said, they add value to the community. So I think that it would be useful that if they come in with, you know, an event that we think adds a lot of value, then we should be able to say, okay, we're only going to charge you X amount, so people get it individually.
Thank you, Councilman Wolfman. Yes, Councilman Flynn?
On top of that, I'd also like to add that council previous to ours worked very hard to establish a downtown, coming out here, entertainment district, where you can have the alcohol out and wander through town and enjoy.
A social district.
A social district, thank you. But if there's nothing downtown to be social about, it seems kind of silly that we have a social district and nothing to socialize at, because our fees are so high that nobody wants to come downtown and want us to be social. So it seems like we shot ourselves in the foot to do one thing, we eliminate the reason to do it.
Thank you, Councilman Flynn. Councilman Soha?
Maybe with council's, you know, agreement, maybe we revisit it and just bring it back to eliminate the fees for these parades altogether and just make it a line item. It was, Jason, correct, is it 12, or 12,000, about $12,000 a year we spend?
Approximately 12 to 15. I think it's closer to 15 last year. Remember, we went over this, I think this is going to the second year, so it's probably more than 15 now.
Well, no, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, please, that there's language that we're not allowed to give away our services, correct? But if it's for an event that the city determines is able to booster the downtown district, then we can make special determination.
Yeah, it's a little broader, actually, than the downtown district. It's things that would be in effect to promote the city or that sort of thing, or for recreation purposes. Yeah, and if you were going to do that, in effect, almost what you're doing is you're saying you're co-sponsoring, is the city the event for that purpose, which then allows you to cut the break, because it's seen as the city investing taxpayer money in it, right? To the extent that you don't charge what it actually costs you for whatever services the city performs in order to enable that event to take place, whether it's police coverage, barricades, or whatever else.
Thank you, Tom. Follow-up, if I may?
Please.
Thank you. So, I've spoken to Mr. Jostwick, I'd like to talk about this. He has invested in our city. He moved in here a number of years ago, and has become a very solid fixture, and I really admire and appreciate what you've done, sir. And what I would ask council to consider, and maybe we can move forward, is consider these events in the downtown district as city-sponsored events in totality, so that we're not burdening these not-for-profit entities that have $1,000 in the bank to put the barricades up. I'd also would like to mention that Mr. Jostwick said, when they moved the light-up parade to the fair last year, that his phone was ringing nonstop of people who were upset that the event had moved from the downtown district. And so, just want council to be aware of that, and maybe we could bring it up in May, or we could have a Public Services meeting in the next couple of weeks and make a recommendation.
Are you presenting on Thursday?
No, sir.
You're next.
May 1st.
May 1st, okay. Thursday, May 1st, discuss the budget for that? Is that okay, as a council during that budget working? I will say, one of the, I'm sorry if you didn't have enough time to read the new committee rules, I think we should follow the procedure of actually making a motion that we're sending it to a certain committee under normal circumstances, just so that it's clear where this is going to be discussed next. Although the Thursday meeting is just a work session, so I think we could just add that to the agenda informally. So would you like to make a motion to send it to Public Services, or talk about it at the budget hearing when Mr. Blake presents?
I think the budget hearing's appropriate.
Okay. Yeah, that would have more of the council there. Okay, so we'll talk about it May 1st. Thank you, appreciate it. Was there anything else on that? Did it mean to cut anyone off? Yeah, Councilman Soha?
Yes, Mr. Jostwick, did you have anything to add?
No.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Okay. Letter D. The child abuse prevention awareness of Hillsdale County will be holding their annual 5K Run and Walk Color Run on Saturday, March 17. Registration begins at 8:00 AM at Sandy Beach Park. Anything to add on this item? Hold up. Thank you. Okay, letter E, we have an update from our county commissioner. Thank you for being here, Commissioner Engels, good to see you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council and City Manager. I have a report that we received in our last Board of Commissioner meeting, it's 2025 equalization report. And in this report, it's probably 30 pages, one page in particular is very interesting. As I look at the numbers, four cities, in the city of Hillsdale, the county equalized value in 2015 was $144,812,300. In 2025, city of Hillsdale equalized value was $288,558,900. So it's almost doubled from 2015 to 2025. To compare that, Jonesville in 2025 was $95,275,300. And to pick a township, in particular Somerset Township, county equalized value, which is real personal property, Somerset's value was $475,847,580. So Somerset Township is very high equalized value, in fact, the highest in Hillsdale County. To compare that, the next county, the next township in the county, after the Somerset at $475 million, is Cambria Township, with an SEV, or CEV of $193,880,000. So when I look at these equalized values, you know, there is growth in our county, and you know, in particular, in the last 10 years, there's been, the total in the county in 2015 And in 2025, in the county, was $3,305,686,95,592. So there's been, in the last 10 years, tremendous growth in our county. And that completes my update. Any questions I can answer, questions?
Thank you. Council? Hold up.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Wolfman?
So basically, what you're saying is that in the last 10 years, values have doubled?
Yes.
In Hillsdale County?
Pretty much across the board, that's a fair statement.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Commissioner Engels.
Thank you.
Okay. We will move on to Roman numeral 7, instruction of adoption of ordinances. We have the SAB for Berry Street. Well, does council have any further thoughts on this before we take our vote? Councilman Soha, you weren't here. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Burton. I did watch the April 7 meeting, I was, I did, I did text, had a text exchange with Tim, I was pronouncing his last name properly, this afternoon, and asked him if he and the people who wrote the letters were still opposed. And unfortunately, they said yes, so I'm going to have to be a no.
Thank you, Councilman Soha. Councilman Flynn?
Did we receive, then, between the last meeting and this meeting, any further notice, notifications from any of the property owners on Berry Street, other than Ms. Tomcree, that they were rescinding their?
I believe CJ was the only one. I did have a few people tell me verbally they would support 3,000 to 4,000, but.
Fair enough, dear.
Katie, did you receive any of the letters? I assume you would have forwarded them to us. Okay. Yes, Councilman Soha?
I did speak to a resident that lives on Berry Street that was for it this week, but I don't know if he would be willing to be publicly, but I just.
Okay. Yeah, my last thought on this was actually, we talked to the ONG committee about just rescinding the ordinance that created the local officers' compensation commission, and using the $20,000 in council salaries to bring down the SAB cost, but that would only bring it down less than $1,000 per property. So, we could wait and continue to explore further funding options, or just take the vote now.
Councilman Morrissey?
I think we should take the vote now and put this to rest. We've had, we've offered this to a number of neighborhoods over the years. There have been this one and a previous one, were the only ones who refused it. I think it should just be, well, governed by the consent of the government, they don't want it, they don't want the special assessment, that should be it.
Thank you, Councilman Morrissey. Is that a motion?
I'm making a motion, sure.
Okay. Motion to approve or reject?
Reject.
Motion to reject. Support. Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey to reject the Berry Street SAB, seconded by Councilman Stujal. Katie, so this is a motion to reject. Yes, further discussion, Councilman Soha?
Thank you, Mayor Burton. Just to clarify, that yes vote means we are not in favor of it.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, Councilperson Flynn?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stujal?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Galagino?
Yes.
And Councilperson Brown?
Yes.
Thank you, Katie. We don't have any old business, we will move on to new business. We have a traffic control order. Let's see, Chief, would you like to discuss this? Thank you for being here.
Good evening. Towards the beginning of the year, the Public Safety Committee convened. It was brought to my attention, again, regarding Waldron Street, the block specifically between Southwest Street and South Manny, with parking on the south side of the road. It's generally not used, however, the north side is. There's a double yellow line, but to pass the parked cars, you have to cross the center line and go across the double yellow line if you're going westbound. You would have to on either side of those cars parked. We did a parking study, if you will. I had officers on each shift, monitored that for almost a month. I went and checked it several times a day. I had officers on the night shift look at it, and during that whole period, none of our officers ever observed a vehicle parked on the south side of the street in that block, nor did I. At that time, Jason from the Street Department and I communicated, who stated they could get assigned and restripped if we got a traffic control order in place. We decided to draft a letter, Jason drafted that, and it was delivered to all of the houses on that block, regarding what we were considering, which would be no parking at any time on the south side of that block. That way, the W, lane divided line can be moved to the south to allow two lanes of traffic unobstructed going by parked vehicles on the north side. We gave them a whole month to contact myself if anybody had any questions or disagreed with that. I received no communications, no contacts from anybody. I went and made personal contact with the Director of Evil Funeral Homes, figuring they may have an effect from this. They absolutely did not appreciate it, the personal contact, stated that on occasions they do leave the alley and go on to Waldron Street. They felt there would be no impact to their business whatsoever by prohibiting possibly that four parking spaces that may be used by them, or people coming, and thought it was a good idea. So visually looking, the very next block to the east on Waldron Street visually looks to be about six feet wider, and there's parking on both sides, and we had, there's no traffic issues there. Jason from the Street Department actually took a measurement of curb-to-curb on those two blocks. The block that we're talking about tonight is six and a half feet narrower the street is, and that we still allow parking on both sides of the street. So, that is not wide enough, it is classified as a, what's it classified as?
Local street.
As that classification, it does not meet the criteria for being wide enough for two-way traffic and parking on both sides. So from a public safety standpoint, and us doing our due diligence of our study and contacting communication with the area, receiving no negative feedback, I prepared a traffic control order, which says there shall be no parking on the south side of Waldron Street between Southwest Street and South Manny Street at any time. And this would be, would revise a traffic control order issued in 2017, which, when center-city apartments were built in that parking lot, in that alley that goes one way and drops out onto Waldron Street, we had to make the south side of no parking, 50 feet on each side of the alley, just so garbage trucks, plow trucks could get out of the alley and make a turn in whichever direction they had to go. So there's already 100 feet in the center of the block that we don't allow parking, and the rest of it on each side of that is not being utilized whatsoever. So, the traffic control order is in front of you to vote. It is our recommendation from a public safety standpoint, legitimate one, that we appropriate a park in the south side of Waldron Street between West and Manny.
Thank you. Thank you for exploring this, thank you for the officers, thank you, Jason, everyone for looking into this and getting us an answer, I appreciate it. Any questions, comments? Yes, Councilman Soha?
Thank you, Mayor Burton. I'm estimating, and I can't stop talking, so. But, thank you, Chief. I did just want to bring to council's comment, a friend of mine lives on the corner there, in the old Rose Corner, and he suggested that to alleviate the traffic, because Waldron's used as a pass-through because of the one-ways, that we might consider restriping the one-ways and making them two-ways again. I know that's a tall order, and, but I just wanted to mention that to council. I know I didn't do anything in writing, but he did say that privately to us.
Thank you, Councilman Soha. Anything else? Okay, do I have a motion to, of Councilman Flynn's on the app?
No, I was just going to make a motion.
Motion to approve?
Yes.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Flynn, seconded by Councilman Soha, to approve the traffic control order for Waldron Street between Southwest and South Manny Streets. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. We will move on to letter B. Approval for social district per- Approval for social district permit for Saint Joe's Cafe. Hi, Sam.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Proton and council. About two weeks ago, I had an opportunity to talk to Joshua Mencio, who's the owner of Saint Joe's Cafe. He stopped here by City Hall and he was interested in applying for a social district permit for his restaurant. One of the things he wants to do is take advantage of the Hillsdale Foodie Walks, which happen once a month during the summer. We already have a couple other restaurants, Hillsdale Brewing Company, and here's to you, Pub and Grub. They participate and they have their social district permit. So he was interested in doing the same thing. In order to apply to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission to get that permit, we have to, the local government has to basically adopt a resolution recommending that they go ahead and issue a permit. So you can see there is a form resolution included in the packet. And if that's approved, then city staff will go ahead and submit that on his behalf and he can continue with the application process, which is all done through the Michigan Liquor Control Commission from this point on.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Two forty-seven. Have a good night. Okay, so we're just adding them into the social districts, giving them a permit. Any questions, Councilman Flynn?
Just a quick question and clarification, because the Dawn is already in the social district, correct? And then Pub and Grub is already in there. So the businesses actually have to apply to be in the social district? It doesn't just say from here to here and it includes everybody within that area?
Yeah, so the, the way the state wrote the law to set up social districts, it requires the city to first establish a social district. That's what we have in place where we draw the boundary around the downtown area and our boundaries roughly commensurate with the Tifa district. And then for a restaurant to go ahead and participate, they have to be a qualified applicant, which means they have a certain type of liquor license. So in this case, Saint Joe's Pizza, they have a Class C retail license as well as an on-premise license. Both of those qualify to allow them to apply. So the way the state law works is the first step is they go to that local government unit. They get a recommendation in the form of a resolution. They take that back to the state. They have to pay a $250 permit application to the state and they have to go through an inspection process, similar to what they would do to get the liquor license to begin with. Once they have that completed, then they are qualified, a qualified business in the social district. And there are certain rules about what kind of beverages they can serve, the type of container it's in. And again, all that is governed by the state statute that allows for these in the first place.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Morrissey to approve the resolution for Saint Joe's Pizza to apply for a social district permit. Katie, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilperson Morrissey?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
StuJel?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Calagno?
Yes.
Councilperson Brons?
Yes.
And Flynn?
Yes.
Seven zero approved resolution, three six three four.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you, Sam. Appreciate it. Okay. Resolution of support for Industrial Drive Transportation Economic Development Fund grant. Sam, you'd like to speak on this too? Thank you.
Yeah, so the city of Hillsdale, we are seeking funding to do a resurfacing project on Industrial Drive. Every year, we have an opportunity to apply for a grant through the Michigan Department of Transportation. They have a couple different categories of grants. One of the ones that we are eligible for as a city with under, population of under 10,000 is the category F. So it's their Transportation Economic Development Fund and it's designed to support projects that are going to have an economic development impact on the community. So we selected Industrial Drive because of the condition of that street as well as its importance to the industrial park. It receives a tremendous volume of commercial truck traffic. It's utilized by a lot of our employers there and it's also a connector to basically connect Carlton Road to Mechanic, which is listed as an all-season road by the state. So that's another point in favor of, of selecting that project. So we would like to submit a grant application for that. What we're asking from council tonight is to adopt a resolution declaring support for the project. We're also in the process of soliciting a number of letters of support from the businesses that would benefit from this. We're gonna take all of that and put that in our application and submit it to the state. These applications are due before May first.
Thank you. Were any other projects considered under this grant?
So we, we had discussed, last year, we had looked at Woolcott Street. We actually had applied for this grant specifically for Woolcott due to the presence of Bob Evans there. Now, we weren't successful in getting funds for that. One of the challenges is that we couldn't, couldn't really make a convincing argument that that was going to be a connector in terms of facilitating connection points between all-season routes. And it has to do with the way the streets are classified. So even though we put forth our best effort, that just wasn't a great candidate project. So moving forward, we're going ahead and Industrial is a much better candidate. We feel that there's a significantly higher chance that will be considered for funding for this project.
Thank you. You said that there's an opportunity to apply. Is this like one grant in a, in a basket of grants that we could possibly apply for? Does this prohibit us from other types of grants?
So there, there are two grants that we will typically apply for each year through the Michigan Department of Transportation. That's a category F and then the category B grant. So those are the two where we're eligible because of our population size and what types of projects there are.
And we'll submit under category B as well?
I believe we have submitted. That's, Kristen was involved with, you know, helping out with a number of these things. And so Jason and I are kind of taking this now, but I believe in past years, we have applied for category B as well.
Category B. And we're cracking, we're actually, we're gonna meet on in the next week or two to look at another street. We're looking at possibly the Orwitz and around there.
Okay, is this?
If we're a local street.
Local street?
Yep.
Okay, so we're, we're not excluding local streets by picking an industrial street? Great, thank you. I appreciate that. Councilman Flynn?
Two quick questions then. Do we know how much the grant would be for?
So there's a, well, it depends on the project cost. We could, we could obtain the numbers. I think we have a rough estimate for Industrial. I don't know off the top of my head right now if we can get that for you. So the grant requires a 20% match.
That was gonna be my next question. Would the grant cover how much of the project? So 80%?
Yeah, if, unless, you know, if, if we were to apply, we could, you know, do a higher match amount. In fact, the higher your match amount is, typically the better chances you have of getting funding. But yeah, 20% is, is a minimum match and then they would cover the rest if they award us funding.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a plan to split the 20% portion between the city's road funds and SAB?
I don't know the answer to that at this time. We're, we're still in the early stages of looking at these projects, so.
Thank you. Councilman Soha?
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I believe we've done grants before and they have been also set special assessment district.
Thank you. Mr. Mackey, anything about that?
No, I just think of what Soha mentioned, that we'll gather, and if they don't specifically preclude us from doing special assessments, that would be our approach.
Okay. What, is this the same grant as Arch Avenue?
No, so Arch Avenue, it wasn't actually a grant program. That was an appropriations request to Congress. So that was in here, Mark.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Soha. Let's see. Katie, could I roll call vote?
Yes, Councilperson Soha?
Yes.
StuJel?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Calagno?
Yes.
Councilperson Mete?
Not here.
Oh, excuse me. Wrong, sorry.
Ouch.
Yes.
And Flynn, Flynn.
Yes.
And Morrissey, sorry.
Yes.
That's seven zero approved, guys.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you, Sam. Okay, we have to set a public hearing for an MEDC. Oh, Sam's up here again. Okay.
Thank you again, Mayor Proton. Just very briefly, to recap for you all, back in 2022, we obtained a grant through the Michigan Strategic Fund. It was a community development block grant and it allowed the city to undertake a project which we completed last year, which involved a replacement of 75 inline shut-off valves in our water main system. It also allowed us to go ahead and line about 1.4 miles of sanitary sewer in the city. So we are now wrapped up with that project. We're working on closing out this particular grant. As part of the closeout process, the MEDC does require the city to set a public hearing. It's just to allow anybody to comment on the project after it's concluded. So it's just a formality that we need to go through basically in order to complete the closeout documentation and get this finished.
Thank you, Sam. Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion to set a public hearing for May 5th, 2025 at 7:00 PM?
Soon.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Flynn, seconded by Councilman Morrissey. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Okay. Jason? Ground penetrating radar purchase. We are on letter E, if you are following along.
Thank you. This past December, council voted to enter to the agreement with the Community Foundation to purchase one ground penetrate radar to be used at our Lakeview Grove cemeteries in addition to underground survey work within the city. We solicited three quotes for this project, or for this purchase. The first was from Guideline Geo with an amount of 23,500. Power Tell, 23,100. And Val de Tab, add La Terre for 26,100. I'll go down there on the memo. Guideline Geo, the training is free. They just have a line item there for their travel of $1,000 included in their quote. Power Tell was $1,500 for the training and travel and lodging is additional and no costs put on theirs. When we talked to them, it is an entire, a sense of material thing, same thing with the third one. So that recommendation, we did get the Community Foundation. We've received their funds of $24,000. With that, I would ask to purchase, to, council to award this, purchase to Guideline Geo in about 23,500.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Any comments or questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the purchase for Guideline Geo? So.
Second.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha to approve the purchase from Guideline Geo in the amount of 23,500, seconded by Councilman Brons. Roll call vote, Katie?
Yes, Councilperson.
How are you doing?
StuJel?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Calagno?
Yes.
Councilmember Brons?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
And Soha?
Yes.
Seven zero approved.
Thank you, Katie. We will move on to letter I. Act Fifty-One, City Street Decertification.
Thank you. Um, so every year, we do a, what's it called, an Act 51 report for state certification of a major and local street fund or system. Depending on our major and local classification, that's how much money we get on from the gas tax Act 51. While doing the Act 51 2024 report right now, or as we're renewing it with MDOT, we did find that we have a couple of streets that do not qualify as Act 51. What we see first is Winona Drive. Winona Drive was planted years, a year before our time. So we've been receiving money for that for a long time for a road that doesn't exist, is not open for travel. So as part of the formality, we need to certify it from our Act 51 report, so I can send this back to the state. The second part of this is Mechanic between Bar and Industrial. That has been getting double certified from the city and the county for, I don't know how long, at least since 2004. I found a letter from previous directors. That is a border street between the city and the county. The county has that jurisdiction. We have a couple others like Barber Drive. We have a border street that goes like that from Lake Road. We have, oh, Spring Street, I'm sorry, Bar Street from Fayette to Spring. It's just a borderline that we, that's not ours. So with that being said, I would ask just to approve the resolution as presented.
Okay, so we've been receiving double funding, the county and the city?
Correct.
All right. Any questions or comments on this item? Councilman Flynn?
Does this, what we're going to be going at, does this also include Hillcrest? You didn't mention Hillcrest.
Yes, I'm so sorry. Yes, so we'll help the 440, 450 feet of Hillcrest.
Yes.
As, as part of the note as well.
Okay, just wanted to.
Thank you.
Do you have an idea of how much this will change your funding?
Yes. So it'll take my major funds down $5,500 and locals draw $1,800. So I'll take the $5,500, $1,800 off this.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for being on top of this. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Okay, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Soha. Voice vote fine on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Okay. We will move on to letter G. Airport parking lot bid award. Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mayor Proton. So first, I want to introduce the airport manager, Travis Stapleton, to come up and say a few words about himself and introduce himself to the council. And then I also have Alex Dehan, RSNH engineer, who will be helping answer these questions in the next two hours. So Travis?
Hello, name's Travis Stapleton, born and raised in.
Excuse me, could you hit that button there?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Name's Travis Stapleton, born and raised in Hillsdale. Been in aviation my entire life. Worked at the airport as my first job around 13 years old to pay for flight lessons. From there, went into college, obtained a bachelor's degree in aviation management, a minor in business. At that point, I went into the airport consulting field, working on master planning and airport design. I'd worked for 121 air carriers and also owned and operated a nationwide survey company for 20 years. And just have deep ties to the Hillsdale Airport and wanted to step in and give it my best to help out.
Thank you for taking over for us. Appreciate it. Could you speak on continuity of services, management? Do you foresee any changes at the airport?
So that's something I want to dig into a little bit deeper. As I'm time, I'm pretty fresh in the position at this moment. I'd like to dig into the budget and kind of get a feel for what the city's goal is with the airport. I assume that is to reduce taxpayer money supporting the operation of the airport. With that in mind, then there would be a reduction in staffing, to reduce wages out there, so we wouldn't have someone there full-time.
Do you have a sense yet, maybe you're too early, of how that would affect our total income from the airport?
So I don't believe it would, because anyone that's operating into or out of the airport can call and arrange services. So that'd be the major change, would it? Just let us know you're coming and the service will remain the same. My concern is if we have one operation a day, we don't need to pay someone for eight hours to sit there for one hour's worth of work. So that's where I'm looking at the numbers. That ends up over the course of year. When things are slow, I don't think we should be spending money.
I see. Do you foresee any difficulty in, in that transition of getting people to notify the airport ahead of time? Are most people aware that that's necessary?
It's quite a common practice throughout the country. And typically, they will call with advance notice anyway. So I don't foresee many challenges with the process changing. I think it'll be pretty much the same. It's just those that might land without notice will have a slight delay in service if we don't happen to be there. During the mowing season, which is quite intense out there, we'll have those that are mowing trained to operate the fuel truck and they can provide services for those that land without notice.
I see. Okay, so they'll just come in and provide that?
Exactly.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for coming on board for us. We appreciate it. Any comments or questions from council? Yes, Councilman Flynn?
Do you foresee in the future possibly bringing in like a business that can be housed at the airport? Like you said, you were for 20 years, you know, the, the surveying company. Can you foresee in the near future, maybe five years from now, having somebody that does things like that based out of Hillsdale?
Yeah, that's part of my plan is to pursue a business of that type or even a charter business, like a 135 operator. Someone that we can fill any open space that we have that can generate revenue. So I'll be reaching out to contacts I have over my career to see if they want to do a base in Michigan. It's a good location for an operation like that. So I think there's potential for that. We also have limited facilities at the moment, so it depends on what, what their demand is.
Okay, thank you. Do you foresee the repair of those facilities particularly, the hangars going forward?
I do not. I don't feel that's money well spent at the moment. I think we can make necessary repairs for much cheaper than we were planning on.
Okay.
So I'm like, my opinion would be to pause that project and that expense at this time.
Okay.
I really want to pause everything and slow down a little bit, look at the budget, dig into it with finance and see where we can make some cuts to try to meet that goal of eliminating taxpayer money going to the airport.
Thank you. And you're still, are you operating your business there too?
No.
Okay.
I've never, I, well, okay, so my survey company is based in Jackson. I did open the flight school in Hillsdale. We're currently not operating in Hillsdale, we're operating in Jackson. We do plan on bringing an airplane back down to Hillsdale to offer flight school opportunities.
Okay. So you're not renting from the terminal anymore?
I do have an office in the terminal and I do run into T-hanger spaces of the airport.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But we are active down here. We bring our airplane down, we've given away a couple of airplane rides, we've done some work with some air patrol and we plan to be more with the local community too.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Any other comments or questions? Councilman Soha?
So, thank you again, welcome. So didn't we approve the money and allocate the money to repair the hangar?
Yes.
And so what happens to that?
It's not going to be spent unless there's expenditures on a particular hangars, but the T-hanger doors is what he's referring to primarily, so that just won't be spent. So it's.
So the allocation will remain of the, was it ninety thousand dollars?
Eight hundred and five.
And, is there any way to claw some of that back?
It isn't a clawback situation, it's just not being spent.
It's just not being spent.
There are some hangar doorwork that needs to be done, particularly the one finger hangar, the corporate wine hangar, but the majority of the lines here of that just will not be spent.
Until Travis gets his ducks in a row and.
Yeah, then we can snap.
Will that be re-presented to us or will you just be able to move forward?
It will be, it will, it will be re-presented if, depending on what that plan is moving forward.
I would appreciate permission appraisal when he has a plan to move forward.
So we, I believe it was last council meeting, we approved the budget resolution moving the hundred and five thousand, so probably at some point, we're going to move a percentage of that money back depending on what Travis needs for the repairs?
That money is in the capital improvement, airport capital improvement budget, so it's basically, you just earmarked it within the budget, so it just won't not, won't not be.
That'll just be part of the general or the airport fund balance from now on. Okay.
Yes.
Now on to the parking lot. So as far as. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Wolfren.
If you could give a copy of your bio in case someone, like constituents, asks me about what's going on at the airport and I say, oh yeah, we've got a new manager, so I can say.
Can you share my resume? I thought it worked.
Yeah, if you just send me a resume, that'd be great. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Or to all of us, I guess.
I can forward it to all of you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I, I.
Katie, could you maybe include that in the packet in this section too, if anyone wants to check that out? Okay, anything else before we move on to the agenda here? Okay, so we have the money for the parking lot through grant, but we haven't actually received it yet, correct?
Yes, so Alex, if you don't mind coming up. So we put, the parking lot is actually separate from the terminal itself and we did that to capitalize on funding sources. So as it states in here, our total project costs about three hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight four oh two. Three hundred and eleven thousand of that is for the actual hard construction cost and seventy-seven thousand is for engineering services with R.S.N.H. So this, this particular item is twofold. One, awarding the contract to a low bidder, Big Red Team, DuBois Trucking and Excavating, and then the second part of this particular component is we are requesting that city council approve paying for this project out of capital reserves and the general fund in the short term, so this work can be done and be completed before the September fly-in. And then it's anticipated that, and Alex can talk about this, that in September, we will also be able to apply for full reimbursement for this project. So Alex, can you talk about that?
Yeah.
And your recommendation?
Of course, yes, Mr. Mackey, thank you for having me and Mayor Proton Board, thank you for having me as well. Again, Alex Dehan with R.S.N.H., we've been doing engineering work for the airport for over a decade now. So, Mr. Mackey's correct, there is an ongoing terminal project, as many of you know, out there at the airport. That was funded as part of a completely separate grant, in which case the city got two and a half million dollars to fund that project with the rest being local. This project that we're talking about today, the parking lot project, is in association with that project, so if we were to stop construction at the end of this job we have going on, there would be no parking lot. So the parking lot project that we are bringing forth tonight is funded separately through a bipartisan infrastructure law, A.I.G. grant. That grant is a hundred percent funded by the F.A. in the state, so there's no local match as part of this grant. The problem is that money is not going to be allocated to the city until September of this year. That's a disservice, I guess in my humble opinion, for almost every airport in the nation. Because of the S.F.A. fiscal year runs from October to September of every year, you don't get the next years of funding until September of the previous year. So it's kind of a disservice, but the city does have an option to frontload that cost until the money's become available in September for the city to start drawing down funds from that grant after it is awarded, as I see the gist of it.
Thank you. Councilman Flynn?
Is the money guaranteed? As in, if we pay for it, agree to it tonight, we pay for it, Mr. Mackey's wording was, we would have to apply to get the money back. Is there a chance that we wouldn't get the money back or is this just a paperwork thing we have to go through and you can say tonight that it is a hundred percent guaranteed that we will get a three hundred and whatever thousand dollars back so it doesn't cost us a dime?
I will tell you what the F.A. would tell me and they would say no money is ever guaranteed, but it is money that is allocated to the city. So this money is already in the F.A.'s hands, they just have not get given it to the city or to any sponsor this year because they are still working through the grant application process. So the grant application was actually submitted at the end of February, which they have about ninety to hundred and twenty days to review themselves before they were to allocate the money to.
Is there a chance though that somebody somewhere in a really big chair could sign an executive order cutting the F.A.'s budget and then all of a sudden, we're screwed?
There is the possibility.
Thank you.
Councilman Wolfren, any?
No.
Okay.
And just to add to that, Bob, we have been in this position before where we have advanced funds for particular projects and then been reimbursed. Sometimes, as Alex had indicated, we're kind of in that position to get something done at a more prudent time.
Understandable, but I'm just that kind of guy that, you know, oh, we promised we'll pay you that, you know, it's like Wimpy from Popeye, I'll pay you next Tuesday and then, you know, something comes up and all of a sudden, all those people out there are yelling at us that we spent three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and the federal government didn't follow through.
Well, absolutely, but also, you know, when you look at the timing of this one, we can wait till September to it's formally awarded or, but then we're probably looking at construction next year.
Right.
So we have this big beautiful terminal and don't.
No, I understand, I just.
That's just a, just giving you the.
Sure, okay.
The dynamics.
Okay, thank you.
So the process that we're talking about is called, is called seeking reimbursement from the F.A. This is not new. Many, many airport owners do this all the time because of the delay in the funding through September, but like Mr. Mackey was just mentioning, the September timeframe of receiving the money isn't necessarily conducive for construction because you get those fall rains and you're not able to necessarily get on site and get started quick enough to complete the job before the winter hits.
Do you know how long this job will take then once you get started?
The, the construction duration is estimated at thirty days.
Oh, okay.
Travis, do you have an opinion about this?
I think I'm on board with the current plan to get it done.
You have any experience with this sort of reimbursement?
Yeah, and I've worked on airport projects for many years and it typically works out just fine.
Okay, thank you, Travis. Councilman Soha?
Just two points. Typically, when the government reimburses or allocates money for something, then it's in a pot like Mr. Mackey said about our money for the airport and it can't be spent otherwise because it's already determined for that. But my question is, we had a terrible conflagration of events a couple of years ago where it was freezing and the ground was frozen and then we had a torrential downpour in February and the water ran off down into a neighborhood that's outside of the city limits and flooded a couple of basins. Nothing, to my knowledge, has been done with drainage commission or at the county level to alleviate that. We've at the city, as far as I know, had did all of our due diligence to make sure the water, this was just a special circumstance and a crazy weather event, but my question is, I can't tell with these plans, is there a contingency for water runoff so that neighborhood is spared?
Yeah, I think I know where you're headed. So both the terminal building project, that real project and the parking lot project have a combined detention basin for that site that will receive all the runoff from these two improved sites before it's ultimately discharged into the storm network. Yes, so there is a, there is a detention pond on site proposed as part of this project that will receive the stormwater runoff from both of these sites moving forward, yes.
Thank you, Councilman. No, sorry. Thank you, Councilman Soha. Councilman Brunz?
If I recall, Councilman Soha, this has gone before the planning commission already and I think been approved. I could be wrong about that, but. But for my part, I'm a, I'd rather play a conservative, but I can see both sides personally.
Councilman Flynn?
Just one other question out of drainage because talking about the situation Mr. Soha was talking about, a lot of that water that ran off came down Milnes Road Hill and across State Road and then into that area and then into that neighborhood. So does your retention pond or project also include excess water coming from outside the terminal and outside the parking lot?
The detention pond proposed as part of this project would not account for that. It is just for the improvement of this site, yes.
Okay, is there a way that in your construction of the entire project, you can maybe keep some of that water that could potentially run down the hill and cross State Road from entering that area?
Yep, since this is a federal grant, all of that would have to be reviewed by the Michigan private transportation and the F.A.A. And if they wouldn't deem that as part, an applicable part of this project, they would not give you, the city, the money to necessarily make those improvements, but it's something we could talk about offline if you'd wish.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Councilman Soha?
Would that delay this project and then, or would that just be something?
No, 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 there would, there would be, I mean, this project could continue regardless. I mean, it's been permitted, it's been reviewed by the environmental staff at the F.A. and M.D.O. both. It would be a standalone project in that regard.
So additional retention would be an additional project?
Correct.
And it's possible to get funding for that if we?
We might have to wordsmith it a little differently, but yes, we might be able to look that out, yes.
Would I ask you, would it be appropriate to ask you just to put them down over, Mr.?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from council or staff? Okay, let's do, yeah, let's do two separate motions. So I will accept a motion to award the parking lot construction to Big Red Team LLC in the amount of three hundred and eleven thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars and two cents.
Sorry.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Morrissey. Any further discussion? Councilman Flynn?
Just a technical question, so does it come back to bite anybody in R.S.N.H.'s letter? And I know it's probably just to say, but it says Big Red Team, is it a Big Red Team? I didn't know if a typographical error could snag something or if that's no big deal.
No, that's already, that letter's already been accepted by the F.A.
Oh, okay. Is someone would think that they were two separate?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Flynn. Any further discussion? Katie, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilperson Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Caladino?
Yes.
Councilperson Brunz?
No.
Councilperson Flynn?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Six one, that's approved.
Thank you, Katie. Should we do the engineering here? That's under a different item technically, isn't it?
Yeah, I did separate that.
So we'll do that. Okay, no problem. Okay, so our second motion under this letter is to approve the use of the capital reserve funds to pay for the project with subsequent reimbursement from M.D.O. Do I have a motion? Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Stuccio. Katie, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilor, Mayor Proton Caladino?
Yes.
Councilperson Brunz?
No.
Flynn?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Six one, approved.
Thank you, Katie. We will move on to letter H, same, same question here, but the engineering portion. Do I have a motion to approve R.S.N.H.'s airport parking lot construction engineering contract for seventy-seven thousand one hundred and sixty-four and to authorize the city manager to approve the contract on the city's behalf? Motion on the floor from Councilman Flynn, seconded by Councilman Soha. Katie, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Brunz?
No.
Flynn?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Caladino?
Yes.
All right, that's six one, that's approved.
Thank you, Katie. We will move on to letter I, Officers' Compensation Commission Salary Determination. Okay, we have a resolution here to reject the determination. Do I have a motion or is there any discussion?
I make a motion that we reject the officers' compensation commission salary determination.
Support.
Second. Motion on the floor from Councilman Flynn, seconded by Councilman Morrissey, Councilman Soha?
Just yes means no.
Yes means no. Yes, yes means no. Okay, so we are voting yes to approve the resolution. The resolution rejects the determination. Katie, could I have a roll call vote?
Yes, Councilperson Flynn?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Caladino?
Yes.
Councilperson Brunz?
Yes.
All right, that's seven zero. So approved to reject.
Approved to reject. Thank you, Katie, appreciate it. We don't have any miscellaneous reports. I will open the podium for general public comment. You may speak on whatever you wish. You have three minutes. The podium is open.
Hi, I'm here tonight just to introduce myself. I'm Kathy Caliban, and I will be running for mayor. I've been a resident of the city of Hillsdale for, in November, it will be 25 years. I live, work, and worship the city. I have no political agenda. I just would like to be a voice for the people, the city of Hillsdale. Thank you.
Thank you for meeting, Kathy. Any further...
Yes.
I've addressed a couple of different bodies regarding the flag placement, and haven't got any response. I'm a little disappointed in the city overall to the respect that, as many servicemen as we have and as much knowledge as we have on this council, that you've left these flags be as they are for months. They're simply not placed right. They're not up to flag code. I expect probably tomorrow in the city and at the fire department or the places, flags will be lowered to half mast, if you're aware of the Pope Day, and President Trump issued exactly the order to lower the flags. So, it wasn't done today. I don't know if it should have been done today. But if you're not aware of that, I'm not Catholic. I'm not particularly fond of the Pope that we had there. He is a world-renowned leader. So, that... If any of you follow my channel, in our community, they were sadly deficient in lowering the flags for President Jimmy Carter. Who would be another political figure that I wasn't properly fond of, but he was our president. So, anyway, let's get our flags ready in here, please.
Thank you.
Penny Swan, Word Four. Just responding to Mr. Richardson's insinuation that Mr. Mackey falsely said that Kristin, the city engineer, and Ginger quit. They were going to retire. That's not the case, from what my knowledge is. And it's not what was in their letter. Their letter was, because of all the drama and backstabbing and things, and I just reposted those letters so the public know what is actually happening here. I mean, this information that they say I'm doing, they haven't said it, but I'm the social media person. I put the video out. I put documentation back there. So, they can spin it all they want, but the facts are the facts. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Paddy, 181 East Street. Proton Mayor, it's very disheartening to hear that you will not be running for mayor. Wanted to say thank you, and this resident will truly miss you. I think you've been one of the most transparent mayors we've ever had. I love the discussion and thought you bring to this position. You will be sadly missed. There are also concerns that have emerged regarding Andrew Gelsers. Andrew Gelsers is typically as a public official who appears to be operating under a LLC. We have government enriching themselves financially in trying to hide their identity through this LLC for a $225,000 grant. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, Chad here on Board Three. Live over on Ribbon Avenue. I was here during the last meeting. And I'm here to tell you I am going to be here more often. I know I'm very young, considering both of you gentlemen on this council. And knowing that the budget sessions are coming up, I, as a young guy, really, really ask you guys to, you know, follow the gentleman from earlier that was saying, you know, there's not a whole lot of money, and maybe we need to make some cuts. To please take that into consideration. And then, in addition to that, you know, to the budget cuts and whatnot, that, you know, other citizens are looking for, I'm obviously for that as well. Because again, it's not about us in this room right now. It's about my kids. It's about their kids and what Hillsdale's going to be 50 years from now. You know, what we're doing right now is not benefiting my kids, because they're going to graduate in five, six, seven years, and there's nothing for them here, you know? And the way the money is being spent, you know, I've been looking at some of the reports that have been published. And, I mean, we're spending, what, a million dollars every month just in equipment and regular office expenses? That seems awfully like a lot of money. And during my day job, I help run a $40 million business. And we don't nearly spend that kind of money. I know there's a lot more people here and a lot more things to take care of. But it just seems like there's no accountability to where any of this money is going. Because the way I see it, as a young guy, is we have a city manager that calls all the shots, and the council can't do anything about it. To me, that's wrong. And again, I'm new into politics and trying to figure out what is really going on. But to me, you know, coming here during the last meeting and seeing the city accountant and the tax assessor just willingly throw numbers out there, I'd be like, oh, I'm going to get that to you later. If I were to do that to my boss, I would be fired on the spot if I couldn't give you guys what you're asking for. You know, if you guys were my employer. And the way I look at it, and Mr. Mackey, these guys right here that the city voted in are your employer, and I would really think that you would listen to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
Hello again. I just want to reiterate what the gentleman said. Josh, I'm extremely disappointed that you're not running. Since you've been on council, and I hope that means you're moving back to your seat and not going anywhere, I've learned more because of your willingness to question and your willingness to research. And I hope that it... I can't blame you with what you've been going through and what you've been accused of. But I really hope that you consider somewhere down the road, maybe when life's a little bit less crazy, to run, because I think you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Thank you. I'll close the podium. We will move on to the city manager's report.
Mayor Proton, I do not have a report to see.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. We'll move on to councilman. The only thing I wanted to ask, which we didn't have in the agenda, I wonder if the... Oh, our fireman just left. I was wondering if we could get a report on those houses on West Street, if we know what the cause is, if there's any action the city could take to prevent such things. Pretty unusual to have two house fires within...
Three.
Three, yeah. Within, what, three or four months of each other, yeah. Councilman Flynn.
I did happen to ask a couple of the firefighters. I did not get a chance to ask the chiefs this, but I did ask a couple of firefighters that same question, saying it seemed kind of odd. And all of them were... There was no nefariousness, I guess, lack of a better word. The most recent one, from what I understand, the resident had an ill equal burn going on in their backyard, and the wind kicked up and blew the embers into the house, causing the house fire. The one actually on the corner itself, the one that burned before that, they think was electrical in nature. Just older homes that, you know, just weren't... I don't want to blame anybody, but, you know, not as kept up as you want to be, maybe still not in tube electricity instead of newer, up-to-code stuff. The first one, I did not know, but they said there was no nefariousness, no... It just was one of these weird things that different circumstances in that neighborhood just led to those fires.
Thank you, Councilman Flynn. Yeah, that one on the corner of West and Bacon is real lost. Beautiful home. Mr. Mackey, do you know if the city has borne any costs related to those, or will?
Just the cost of our, you know, our firefighting that went there. Typically, those homes were insured, so then we received actually a portion of the insurance proceeds to hold until the insurance company deems that, you know, they've been taken out over the... And such, so... So, no, out of the ordinary cost.
Okay. And the one that's a little bit south, south of Bacon on West Street, is that going to be a total teardown as well? Do we have?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Any other council comment? Councilman Soha.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I also want to announce that today I submitted my signatures, and I am running for mayor in the interim slot after long deliberation and thought and talking with my wife to ensure it was a sustainable thing, talking with the owner of the business that I work for, and talking with Mr. Mackey to ensure that I could do things before, after, or during lunch hour. I feel like it is an appropriate and doable service. I can contribute to the community and would ask for your vote. And I'll be seeing you as I go around the community this fall or spring and summer, so August 5th.
Thank you, Councilman Soha. Appreciate it. Councilman Flynn.
I just want to say that even though I'm 62 and a half years old, I'm not old. Even though I am retired, I am not well off. I have been called old, retired, and well off ever since I was elected, and I disagree with all three. Not all retired people are well off. Not all 62 and a half-year-olds are old. I would agree with Mr. Richardson that younger blood, not only in this council, but pick any committee. I don't care where, church, school, I don't care. Pick any committee. They would love to have 20-year-olds and 30-year-olds and 40-year-olds on their committee. It's their choice. About the only committee that I couldn't join would be county commissioner. They, for whatever reason, meet at nine o'clock in the morning on a Tuesday, which, if you want to look at somebody that you have to be retired to be a county commissioner, that would be the one. Four, I think, of the five still work on the county commission. Mr. Ingles has worked his time and has retired. The other four find time to be a county commissioner. Every other meeting in this county is at night for that sole purpose, that anybody can be on that if they get elected to it, whether it be the North Adams Homeschool Board, whether it be the Wright Township Board, whether it be us. Yet, it stinks, you know, that you have to spend some of your free time on a Monday night, listening to people bitch and complain, but that's what we signed up for. But the 30 and 40-year-olds, except for Mr. Burns, who was voted in, I'm assuming fallen at Cadbury, you know, chose to run. Apathy is, if you want to find a word that's killing any committee, that's it, getting people to run. It's not, oh, they don't have time, or they're too old or they're too young. It's just, they don't want to. So, if you're watching on YouTube, if you're listening tonight, you know, you have until four o'clock tomorrow afternoon to submit 25 signatures to be, to run for city mayor. We don't care how old you are or how young you are, you know? And the same with county commissioners. They'll be up next year, and four of these seats will be up next year. Run. It doesn't cost you a dime to put those applications in to get those names. So, I don't feel old. And yes, I am retired, but trust me, ask my wife and ask my bank. I am not well off.